Welcome to An Honorable Profession, a podcast giving America hope since 2018. I'm Ryan Coonerty. Along with Debbie Cox-Bolton of the New Deal, I'm lucky enough to be your co-host. An Honorable Profession is a New Deal Leaders podcast. The New Deal is an organization that supports the next generation of American leaders. From attorneys generals to state senators to mayors to school board members, these are the people that are pushing policies and politics that will respond to climate change, rebuild our economy, address racial injustice, and restore our democracy. These are incredibly talented people who have dedicated themselves to public service when their country and their communities need it the most. Check out newdealleaders.org to see what I'm talking about. Today, I talk with Lincoln, Nebraska city council member Tom Beckius. In addition to being on city council, he owns his own construction and real estate companies. We talked about how the Democratic Party must be the party of small business, especially in the face of potentially disastrous economic policies from the Trump administration. He shares his insights into where the housing market may be going and how local policies will need to change in order to keep up. Finally, he offers great advice for businesspeople or anyone looking to get involved in shaping their community's future. Enjoy. Lincoln City Council Member Tom Beckius, welcome to An Honorable Profession.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate being here.
I want to start with you're on the city council, you're also running real estate and a construction company. So you are in small business. Democrats, even though they made tremendous investments in infrastructure and small business over time, I think, you know, the populace doesn't see the party as aligned with small business and creating opportunities there. What do you think? Where do you think the opportunities are? Or where do you think the challenges are for small business owners in 2025?
Well, I think we have a ton of opportunity to speak to, you know, I'm a local city councilman, and I think that we have a ton of opportunity to really speak to people who have boots on the ground about how small business actually helps accelerate our total community growth. But also, I think, especially in the era of a Trump administration, how we can actually speak to how specific policies from the new administration may actually hurt small business and why Democrats really need to, I think, as elected Democrats align ourselves with those policies that might be antithetical to small business to show people that, hey, you know, oftentimes it's about who you know locally and those local impacts that can really help regardless of political affiliation. I think sometimes we, as a country, get too involved to say, I'm a Democrat, I'm a Republican, when really so many decisions, as we all well know, are actually being made by people you know that live right down the street from you, regardless of political affiliation. And I think those are the kinds of things that we really need to go back to and reiterate time and time again, but also not be afraid to talk about how specific programs that we've already seen floated, that we've already been talking about now for several weeks, actually impact small business. And let me also just talk a little bit about, we talk about small business, but so much, especially this past week, when we've been, you know, dealing with the potential fallout of what it looks like for federal funding, potential federal funding elimination to occur in the United States to our nonprofit partners specifically. You know, we use the word business, but we also need to expand that use a little bit so that people understand that, you know, there's lots of workers that work for Head Start. There's lots of workers that work for public entities, nonprofit entities that receive governmental funds that are affected by this too. So I think an expansion of that discussion and still not being afraid to say, you know, XYZ policy is going to impact small business and not be afraid to take on those conversations.
I like it. Can you talk a little bit about what you're doing on the ground in Lincoln to support and grow small businesses and jobs? And then, you know, also what you sort of are feeling and seeing in the economy this year as a business owner yourself?
Yeah, I think, you know, right here in Lincoln, you know, I have the good fortune of working with a New Deal mayor, Learyn Gaylor Barrett, and her administration here in Lincoln has really been doing a whole host of things to make sure that we're getting people accreditation, we're making sure that people have opportunities for retraining in our community. But we're also making sure that we're having really real discussions with our partners, with our Chamber of Commerce's about how in Nebraska, not, you know, Lincoln as well, but in the entire state of Nebraska is impacted by our discussions on, for example, immigration. So much of our workforce would be negatively impacted by a turn in immigration policy that we really need to speak to as well. Those are important considerations for, of course, individuals, but business and business owners across the state of Nebraska that really help elevate our, you know, our number one export, which in the state of Nebraska is agriculture. And so we need as many people as we can get in states like Nebraska. And Nebraska is not different than other Midwestern states that need population, need people to come to their specific areas and help work on the economies that drive, you know, our particular states.
I think many of us can make that direct connection between immigrant labor and agriculture and our food prices and the whole supply chain that operates there. Immigrant labor also plays a huge role in your industry, construction and real estate. And we have a lot of houses that we need to rebuild and all these, from all these disasters that we're seeing around the country. We also just need to build a lot more houses, period. I know this is an issue that you are passionate about. Can you talk both about the impact that a potential immigration ban crackdown and tariffs, frankly, on building materials could have on addressing the housing crisis that our country faces?
Sure, absolutely. I think it's a no-brainer for a lot of people that both of those issues, be it tariffs or immigration, would wildly impact the ability for housing affordability to come down here in the United States. And obviously, every state's affected. But I think it's also really important to talk to constituents and folks on levels that are easily digestible to folks. It's easy, for example, to talk about tariffs and, you know, the price of steel, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, a lot of homeowners, that's not really applicable to them. But lumber is, you know, when you go down, you know, even when we're talking about building a house, obviously lumber's a vital component to a single-family residential or multifamily, low-density multifamily residential construction. But also just going down to the local lumberyard and buying, you know, material that you need for your deck or what have you, you know, those tariffs are impacting those prices too. And American construction, especially all facets of American construction, would come to a halt if we had a serious reform of immigration to a point where we are not letting people in. You know, we have to maintain that. And I think you're right in that we have to frame these conversations in terms of policy that the current administration may be putting forth in terms of simple things like housing affordability. Because so many of them correlate with each other. I mean, construction costs are directly related to tariffs. Worker shortages are directly related to immigration. You know, so much of what we're talking about are, we can nail down to simple things that people can really touch and feel, like the cost of housing and how much, for example, a new house costs in your local community.
And in terms of your local community, what housing policies or projects are you most excited about in terms of creating more affordability and opportunity in your community?
Yeah, I think that we have a huge opportunity in front of us. Obviously, we have housing costs that are problematic across the board. I think, I wonder if we haven't sold ourselves a little bit short, speaking only to affordable housing, capital A, affordable housing, when I think really we have an opportunity in front of us to talk about housing affordability across the spectrums at all price points. And I think that this is really an opportunity, especially for Democrats, to start to own that issue specifically. We have to take an all-hands-on-deck approach when it comes to housing affordability in the nation. There are certain things that we can't control, and there's plenty that we can control as well. Some of that's just narrative. I mean, when we talk about interest rates, for example, mortgage rates, we still have to remember that historically speaking, we're in a pretty good interest rate environment. Now comparatively to where interest rates had been and the subsequent value, rising values that I think a lot of people have seen across the nation, especially in my neck of the woods, you know, comparatively, that can seem challenging. But historically, we're not in a bad place when it comes to mortgage rates. We have work that we can do, for example, on zoning issues. You know, my philosophy right now is that if it's not a life safety issue, everything is on the table for discussion. And I think communities across the board should be having those discussions right now. If it's not a life safety issue, it's up for discussion. You know, for example, we've had a lot of policies in the last 10, 20 years that have dealt with mixed-use development in communities. But in a lot of communities, mixed-use development, that being perhaps commercial on the first floor, housing above, have run into some problems. Oftentimes, if you're doing a light tech project for affordable housing units above a commercial space or in a neighborhood, you might not be able to get command the commercial rents that you would actually need to lease out that commercial first floor. And what we're also seeing in the insurance kerfuffle that's going on here across America as well, is that mixed-use developments are much more expensive to insure than they were even two or three years ago because of the heightened risk of multifamily housing. I think that insurers have seen an increase of potential claims due to mixed-use development and those combinations that have made it unattractive for their portfolios. And of course, those things will ebb and flow as insurance companies get in and out of markets. But I think across the board, whether we're talking about mixed-use development or single-family housing, of course, we've seen insurance premiums skyrocket. And I don't think that we're going back from that either. So I think on some level, that's a new norm that we need to address and how communities go about talking about what zoning changes may or may not be good for their community. I think it's important for us to lead those discussions now and take control of that narrative as to position ourselves, I think quite rightly, as to how we're going to solve the housing affordability issue in communities across the US.
And I guess, tell us a little bit about what's going on on the ground in Lincoln. It's a dynamic city. It's got, obviously, a large university. It is a center in an agricultural state, an urban center in an agricultural state. What are you seeing, both in terms of your economy and in terms of housing demand over the last couple of years? And what do you foresee going forward?
Yeah, so in Lincoln, we're a pretty steady economy. We're well-known for having one of the lowest unemployment rates in the United States historically. We're, like you said, a university city. We also are the head of government here in Lincoln as well. And so we're a pretty darn steady economy. But we're certainly not immune to what everyone else is experiencing as well. I think we're experiencing a shortage of new home construction. I think we're experiencing, you know, folks, investment folks that may have traditionally invested in commercial real estate assets pivoting and moving into multifamily assets. And so those investors are building a lot of rental units in our community. That's not a bad thing. I think all housing units, the additional of all housing units are a good thing. But it has been much more, the numbers have been much higher than what we've seen in the past. And I think in some ways, certain communities, maybe Lincoln is one of them, I think we need to evaluate whether or not the ideology that folks have been paying attention to for a while now of a denser housing product, whether or not that really meets the market demand of communities like Lincoln, Nebraska, or other Midwestern communities. I think that what I've seen in my work, I'm 44 years old, and I kind of, in my community, came up through a young professionals group. That's kind of the first foray that I had into community leadership and what have you. And I think the ideology was that, you know, folks my age and younger were going to, wanting to move into, you know, multifamily denser housing products that, you know, really made infrastructure much more affordable for cities across the United States, right? But as, I don't know that that's turned out to necessarily be the case in terms of ultimately folks wanting that specific product. I think there's a marked difference that we need to note in whether or not younger folks couldn't get into a more traditional product earlier versus they didn't want that product. And I wonder if we're now maybe finding out that people actually wanted that product, they just couldn't afford it earlier. And so what does that do when we've been working with the mentality over the years of how do we do infill? How do we create higher density so that, you know, ultimately, our infrastructure costs as a municipality remain low and balance that with maybe a market need that we thought was changing? And maybe it still is, maybe it's not. I don't know.
What do you, I mean, if you were trying to forecast for your community and other communities about where is the market demand and where have we fallen short in supply, what does that look like? Do we need more townhomes? Are you talking that we need to make our denser housing more attractive to baby boomers, retiring baby boomers? Like what, where do you think, what would you adjust to try to have, you know, supply meet demand?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm a residential builder as well. Right now, I'm working on a 24-unit townhome project specifically towards people who are looking to downsize. You know, it's a townhome project, and most of my buyers are retired folks who are selling their, the home in which they raised their family and moving into something that's a little bit more manageable for them. Obviously, I think across the United States, we've seen that trend, and I think that will continue. Something that I'm really interested in is, you know, when you look at some of the innovations, and I'm talking more about design innovations that we've started seeing with small houses, but also houses, trailers, for example, the aesthetic assigned to them is really what I'm talking about. When we start to talk about even manufactured home or modular homes as potential solutions, I think that there's actually a higher design aesthetic that I've been seeing across the board that I haven't really seen been translating into starter home aesthetics in my community. You know, when I look at, you know, when I go through my Facebook feed, and I'm kind of a nerd when it comes to housing, so Facebook feeds me, you know, all of this stuff about small houses, they look really nice. But when I go and see starter homes in my own community, they don't look like that. They, obviously, there's a size difference, but they don't aesthetically, they're not very aesthetically pleasing. And I wonder if there's not more of an opportunity, you know, when we talk about higher density development, smaller lots, what have you, to really make sure that we're also creating a product that's attractive to a first-time home buyer as well. Those aesthetics have changed. The ideology of what people want to live in, I think, has changed. The HGTV ideology of how we should all be living has changed. And I think that sometimes my industry as a home builder hasn't necessarily kept up with that. Sometimes it's easy for us just to do the same thing and offer the same product to the market. But I do wonder if there's not more opportunity to pay attention to an aesthetic that then makes ultimately a product that's smaller, more affordable, more dense, more attractive to more people.
I like that. I mean, I think that's a good insight, and it sort of goes back to our first conversation of why we want people involved in small business than to be in government to sort of, because you're thinking differently about the market and products than folks who may come from a different background. And that's a valuable insight that can frame a conversation and then shape policy over the long term. I want to ask, as you mentioned, you're the state capitol, and it's a unicameral legislature, but it's a one-party state capitol in the legislature and governor. I think many of us on the coasts are grappling with how we're going to deal with a one-party federal government. What's your advice for sort of how do you continue to shape and engage local policy when state or federal policy feels like it's going in the other direction?
Yeah, so this isn't necessarily new to someone living in, you know, a blue city in a red state, right? This is what we've lived with for a long time. You know, I think, once again, it's getting down to making sure that people know who you are, making sure that they know who your neighbor, that you're a neighbor of theirs, making it super personal, and making sure that you get to know your constituency base on that person-to-person level. You know, and that being said, there's always going to be opportunities for us to work across the aisle with folks. I think it's important to remember that it may be easier in a place like Lincoln, Nebraska, where you literally are living down the street from a legislator that may be working in the state capitol with an agenda much different than yours. But at the end of the day, I'm always hopeful that there are things that we can agree on, that we can work together on. And at the end of the day, you know, there may be things that we're playing defense on, and that just may be the reality of how we move forward. But I think that as long as we're framing discussions in terms of solutions, rather than pitting against each other or saying, I'm blue, they're red, they're bad, I'm good, I think it's more about how do we, you know, as New Deal leaders have continuously talked about, how do we solve problems and get stuff done? I think at the end of the day, it's really, really hard for any legislator to back down from a good idea. You know, they might want to posture, they may want to position a little bit here and there. But if you're solving problems, it's really hard to back off from that. And I think people might go along with you willingly or unwillingly, but if you're tackling issues and getting to the heart of a problem, I think that you would, I think that you will find that you might have more support than you otherwise would.
Can you tell us a little bit about Nebraska politics? I think when all of us are filling out our maps of where the electoral vote's going to go in these razor-thin elections, it's always nice to see that red and blue stripe in Nebraska, or projected red-blue stripe. Is, are there any opportunities there for that state to move purple, move blue in the coming years?
Well, you know, I, right now, you know, the front page in my local newspaper yesterday was about the Nebraska unicameral talking about winner-take-all and whether or not we would be moving to a winner-take-all state. And of course, people are working, Nebraska, like Maine, is one of two states that allow the electoral votes for president to be separated by district. So we are not a winner-take-all state. And of course, Republicans in Nebraska would much prefer to move to a winner-take-all situation. And so, you know, we're constantly debating that in the state of Nebraska and including right now as we speak. I don't know in the near future if we are on a trajectory to become a more purple state. I would venture to guess that we will remain a pretty red state. Of course, the cities of Omaha and Lincoln, both are fairly blue, but still, I think, pretty, I should say more blue. I think we're still pretty purple. But I don't know if, I don't know if some of our messaging has necessarily resonated, messaging as Democrats has necessarily resonated well in states like Nebraska. And I'm not sure that the framing of the Republicans hasn't been actually really effective in states like Nebraska in terms of some of our nuanced policy positions. And so I don't know, I don't know that I hold out a whole lot of hope for us swinging back to a more purple state. I mean, Nebraska, you know, in my lifetime, you know, has had, you know, Democratic governors and Democratic senators, US senators, but it's been a long time now. And so I don't know, I don't know how we move that needle back at this point.
Sobering, but...
Sobering, but true.
The honesty, yeah, thank you. That good Midwestern honesty there. Thank you for that. I think, you know, to sort of wrap up, I would love to hear your path to public service. And also, to the extent that there are small business owners who are listening and they think, maybe I do, maybe I want to shape my local community a little bit more, maybe I should want to run for office or serve on a planning commission, as I know you did, like, what's your advice based on your experience for how best to engage in public service in your community?
Sure. So my path to public service actually started, I'm from Lincoln, born and raised. Lincoln's my hometown. And other than a short time in college, I've always lived in Lincoln. And so I'm particularly proud of my Midwestern background. And this is where I want to be. And because of, I feel like I grew up in a really great place, my road to public service was me just really giving back to my community. And this is how I still see my role. But that's how it started. I mean, I started being a volunteer on my Board of Trustees for my local library, the library system here in Lincoln, Nebraska. That was about 16 years ago. And so I've just kind of floated through public service on various city boards and commissions through the last 16 years, in addition to my professional work in the community, which, you know, has afforded me the opportunity to sit on, you know, our local Chamber of Commerce board, our Realtors Association board, you know, Construction Industry Board, things related to my work. But all that time, I've also been giving back to my community. And that has, you know, just grown over time. And that has been my passion and my way to give back to my community. And now I serve as an elected leader on the city council. But I think to small business owners, you know, there's always a great opportunity to get involved, to advocate for your specific industry and your specific point of view. The only thing I would caution people about is that make sure you're doing it in the service of the entire community and not just the service of your particular trade. Now, you offer valuable insights about your trade that no one else has. And I think that's the key, that's the real important component that we can bring forth. You know, not a lot of people know about housing, not a lot of people build housing, not a lot of people do land development. Those are the skills and knowledge base I can bring, but I always have to bring it into light, into being, knowing that I'm working on behalf of an entire community. And so I need to be mindful of the fact that while I have special skills and knowledge that I can share with everyone, and I might have my specific points of view, we have to remember that we're working for everyone. And at the end of the day, that balance needs to take place. It's not a hard line just because you're a small business owner and you have special knowledge. It's about serving your community in totality at the end of the day. That's what it has to be about.
I love that. That's great advice and a great reminder to folks about how to engage with both bringing your specialty to the table, but then also keeping the broader community in mind. That's how you're going to get the best outcomes. I appreciate you joining us today, and we love having you in the New Deal. I feel like New Deal has a special connection with Lincoln over the years, and we've all gotten some great ideas and models for governance and policy that have come out of Lincoln. And we're excited to see what you do in your city that we can all bring back to our communities.
Yeah, thanks again for having me. I appreciate it.
An honorable profession is a New Deal Leaders podcast. Thanks to the team at New Deal for producing this episode. We encourage you to bring honor to public service, and because we keep things honorable, no tax dollars are used in the making of this podcast. no tax dollars are used in the making of this podcast.
This podcast is part of the Democracy Group.